Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the two page June twenty ninth Board of Education meeting for Spenceport School District. Please join me. Like we did this. United States of America. We're very proud of all of you, Sam's one nation under God. And there's a lot. Thank you. So. We have a motion to approve the agenda. These are. And. Who said. And so. When we're approving. Exactly. The first Mr. Mattelli, second. Mr. Page on favor. Seven. Question. You're gonna be the man all night. We gotta be coming in the meeting. And trying to make that. Okay, so we're gonna start with. Um, or recognition. Right, we're going to recognize our athletes for winter two and spring.
Right, so unfortunately, uh, you cannot join us this evening, but she did put together a video that I'd like to show that showcases just our fall two and and spring athletes.
Hello, I'm Coach Aaron Austin of the Spenceport Boys Volleyball Program. This is my fourteenth season as the varsity volleyball head coach. We had a tremendous season this year where the boys worked very hard to continue to have a competitive atmosphere during this challenging time. This year, we went eighteen and oh for the first time in Spenceport Boys volleyball history. We won our division as well as winning sectionals and defeating the Class A champion as well. This was our third sectional championship in the last five years. We had many individual awards. But we wanna thank the community for all their support and we hope to continue to build the winning tradition.
Congratulations, Henry.
Thanks, you too, dude. So I was a senior this year on the volleyball team and it was just a blast being able to have this. We weren't sure if, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to play this year because of COVID and stuff like that. And when we heard there wasn't gonna be a state championship, we were really bummed out about that, but we eventually heard that we were gonna be able to play. And um, I remember at the first practice of the year, I told the boys, I said, we have to win the most dominant sectional championship this school has ever seen. And that's exactly what we did, an eighteen and oh year, uh, swept the Class A championship team in Penfield. I don't think a Spenceport team has done that in a long time.
Uh, thirty years.
So. It was a really awesome year for us and as a senior, it was just a really nice way to cap off an awesome year and an awesome career playing for Spenceport, a school I love and a team that really came together for this year.
Yeah, one last thing, being able to play with my brother for the past three years has been something special. You know, I'll never be able to play with him again, which makes me sad, but the fact that we were able to go out on top is something we'll always cherish, so. Thank you.
Hello, it's John Dowd, uh, boys football, varsity football coach. I just wanna congratulate our boys on an outstanding, uh, although abnormal spring twenty twenty one football season. Uh, the boys, uh, weathered the storm through the adversity of COVID and having a uh, season in the spring and were able to uh, finish with a six and no record, make the sectional quarterfinals, ultimately losing to Canandaigua. Um, but having an outstanding six and one season, winning a second in a row, um, divisional title. And uh, the seniors graduating this year, uh, in the last two years have gone thirteen and three with two divisional titles. Were the most successful senior class in school history. Thank you.
Hey guys, my name is Connor Mesh, I've been running back and linebacker for the Rangers for the past three seasons. Um, I just wanna congratulate my teammates and the community on such a great season. Um, that's six and oh, uh, unfortunately lost in uh, sectional semifinals. But um, it was a great group of guys this season, such a weird year. Just wanna say thank you to everyone that helped get this season off, but um, a special thanks to the parents and uh, the coaching staff this year. A lot of effort went in behind the scenes and um, for a group of young men that didn't even know if they were gonna have a season, it can't be a very special one. Brotherhoods that'll never be broken. Thank you for everyone, thank you to everyone who helped make this season so special. I can't wait to see how this program goes in the future, it's definitely all going in the right direction. Congratulations to um, the football team on a six and oh season and I can't wait to see what they do in the future.
What's up Ranger country, Coach Vitaro here, head boys lacrosse coach at Spenceport. What a great first season, uh, capped off by a Division Three championship, Monroe County Division Three championship. Uh, best record in school history of thirteen and three. Uh, we had twelve all county players, including six first teamers. Uh, we had a U S lacrosse All American, All Academic and Connor Mesh, who was also Division Three Player of the Year. Uh, we had multiple awards, uh, it was a great season, looking forward to twenty twenty two.
Sporting KC winner. Sure, finally Tulsa, you don't say them from there. Number four high school lacrosse, Jayden Kittleberger flicks the ball from behind his back and into the goal. That's, that's A level right there. Zips through. I mean like.
Hi, I'm Rob Maduka and I'm the president of the varsity club. Just wanna thank the board for supporting our athletes this season. We did a lot of winning and it was a good time.
And I'm Sam Lane and I will be the president of Zupru next year, hit me. We're super excited to have fan sections and you know, we're just gonna have a good time, we're gonna have fun and can't wait for next year.
Let's tap the stadiums.
Let's do it.
That's. That's awesome. What would I miss though is that they're not here in this room. Um, and and next year maybe we'll, we'll have that opportunity to have um, more students in the room. So congratulations to um, the, the spring and winter sports, um, great job everyone did. That was a great video that we put on. So I always, we always say we enjoy having kids in and it's been a while since we've had um, many of the students come in the room, but I would like to invite someone up uh, for privilege of the floor right now. Ms. Lainey Van Huben, so please come up and share your thoughts. And we're excited to have you here.
Hi, I'm Lainey Van Huben. I finished fifth grade in this commandos class at Terry Taylor. Our class wrote letters to the superintendent about the follow plan, um, topic. I feel very passionate about it and I wanted to speak to you and bring awareness to this situation. Our playground makes people sad and searching people. It's not fair to go individual. Every student in the district should feel welcome and included on the playground. One of my classmates has spent every recess on the blacktop watching every other day have fun. You might be asking, why is he on the blacktop? My friend is in a wheelchair. Our current. Playground is not accessible to the kids with different abilities. Woodchips and the current equipment are not adaptable to his wheelchair. Terry Taylor needs to add inclusive equipment like a rubber top surface. I'm thinking blue to match our school colors. It will hide mud and not be hot to touch as black. Adaptive swings, merry-go-round, even zip lines will be. Will allow all students to. Place a gun. The district will be receiving ten million dollars to address issues of social emotional learning. Playing and social life, social life action is important. This isn't just about my friend and equality. Students with different abilities need some opportunities as the equal opportunities as the classmates. This is an opportunity to make sure that the different abilities feel welcome and included. I hope you take these ideas into careful consideration to make our playground an enjoyable experience for young intelligent people.
Wow. Well, yeah. Thank you. Good job, parents. Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Now we gotta move to. Yes, we will get back to you and share our concerns. Okay. And together with the. Motion to approve something general with the issue of classified technology. And we, Mattelli, second, Roberto, on the favor, seven oh. Thank you so much. And and I thank you, um, Ty and and Rick for your, your late night response. I, I didn't get to a lot of that stuff until um, last night and I may have done more, but my battery died on my computer. Eventually I had to stop, so um, but I appreciate all, all the responses that I did get and the clarification for the items that were brought up. Uh, so President's Report and Communications. Um, what I'd like to do is actually um, maybe the president of the Monroe County School Board would like to award this. I would. We're so excited to join with you. It's a lot of work. It's so much appreciated. On behalf of the Monroe County School Association, grateful appreciation for your service and the Board of Education member. Just like that, let you know that everyone appreciates everything you do and the time you put in and the efforts that you made our district better and all of you. Thank you very much. Well, we do a little round robin where everyone's gonna be able to share with us the same, um, our sentiments and and love for, for Mr. Mattelli. So for those who may not be aware, um, Mr. Razzelli today is his last meeting on the Board of Education. Um, and we're starting to see him leave, so Greg, you have anything to, to share? Oh, I have a lot of great things that we can share. Yeah. You know, Mike, um, Mike, I've learned so much from you when I was first elected on the board a few years ago. You were on, obviously, before I was, but um, just your transparent conversations, the questions that you ask. Um, just your thought process, your thinking really inspired me. Um, I appreciate your phone calls, you know, when you called me a few times and our discussions were incredibly helpful. Um, you've been a great source of knowledge, your demeanor is outstanding and the amount of time and effort and passion that you put into this. I fully respect and I sincerely point to mission line. And I'm going to really miss your knowledge and expertise and everything you brought to the board. Your unwavering support of our school district, the more importantly, our students here as part of support. So Mike, again, thank you so much for your service to this district. It's gonna be a loss and that can be with table of dust. Hello.
I want to thank you for being so generous with the time to spare as brand new board member. There are a lot of knowledge gaps and a lot of things to learn. And you brought the people, just several years' worth of knowledge and background information and you were always so quick to say, call me, I'll fill you in, I'll explain things to you. And as a first year board member, that was so helpful and I just really greatly appreciate all the time that you were able to spend and bringing me along. And your credit to district is clear and so appreciate all the years of service that you.
So I concur with both Greg and Laurie said, but I just go back to uh, when I first met. Hermsburg. At, and you go, yep, very bad. And uh, and and until now, um, just, you know, what a huge um, development, just knowing that we talked before offline about if we don't know, you know, how that works, you know. So uh, and secondly, I, I, I really truly am amazed for someone that education, I know so much, you know, I mean, it's amazing. Uh, so, uh, but I hope that our friendship will live forever. You're great, Mike.
Kind of along the lines of the David Annett, since I've always been amazed at the amount of research that you do so that you fully understand what it is being discussed and stuff way beyond, I think anybody else on board. That's what we missed and uh, we're probably gonna pick that up, so um. I've had a lot of fun meeting on the board, I've enjoyed our, some of our humorous gobacks and stuff. Um, and just, I'm, I'm glad you decided to be a part of this during the time of work. Thank you very much.
I went through my. Anybody for tonight, but like the ones, right? The ones back from when I was first elected, give me a call anytime, I can, you know, I'll fill you in. But what I really noticed when I was going through these was always started with, hey, how you doing? Are you hanging in there? Enjoy your time away, let me know if you need anything. I was always like that, Mike, and I've always been so appreciative of it up until today when you said you weren't coming and I was just like boo. And I know that we'll be back after that, so thank you so much for everything you've done for me while you've been on the board and I know.
And and for me, I also enjoy phone calls, you say a few, there were a lot. There were great conversations. A lot of great conversations where. I hope you continue.
I do all.
Yeah. Because as, as it keeps going, um, even greater espionage, getting, getting information, getting the backstories, getting the, 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 the data. Um, we're, we're really gonna miss that. Um, and and Leah doesn't know, but, but she's gonna have to pick over that role. And here for X number of years. Uh, so I, I just can't tell you how much I appreciated the, 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 the thought, although we didn't always agree. Um, there, there's been times that, that we didn't agree, us and as a board, um, but we always walked out shaking hands and, and um, coming in to do what's best for the students here in the district. Um, your, your insight and contracts and your memory of numbers and I'm in complete awe with, with some of the things that you come up with in meetings and in our, our conversations, so um, I, it's really didn't even matter. And I do wanna remind you that I always got more votes than you did.
That's true.
He was really uncontested though.
Which he was always reminded of that.
Yep, that's true.
So it, it gives me great honor to award. A honorary diploma that you may be one of the only people in the Spenceport School District that has two diplomas from the Spenceport School District. So congratulations and I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
I have a question to. So. I wanna turn this back, I could, I thought about what I was gonna say to the quarterback and um. But off that, so many tangents, so many great stummers, so many different things I could say, so many people that bank. But in the interest of everyone's time, that's one thing about being a board member, the time is very valuable. So just uh, Chris. Very trust amongst others in history have said, if you wanna go somewhere fast, go. If you wanna go far, you need to carry cattle. Thank you all, everyone in this group, for the privilege, wanting to be part of this with you, in the pursuit of the most important reason why we're here. Mission. To win more Spenceport kids, one cliche, it really is appropriate and we're sitting in this room, it should never be overlooked. Through the bad days, and there's been some bad so good days, but through it all, as a team, we've done it together. We made decisions based on the best available information. Sometimes it was the best of the bad, and we did it, it was right. There's so much to learn here, and seemingly the end was pursuit of life's work. For some, this job can consume so much to know. But through it all, in the end, I'm right back to what we do, as the kids. Spenceport School has been around for a little over a hundred years, actually according to Wikipedia, about a hundred and one years. I am confident this school district, this board, without teachers, without leaders to sit in this room. That this district will continue to thrive well into the future. I'm appreciative about beyond words for all the support, all the drum robbery, all the late nights, the great, the bad, everything and all the times I've had in the past six years with everyone here. All I can really say. I'll be around. You didn't say you'll be back. Yeah, actually, we'll be back. For.
Wow.
That is something to think about.
Thanks, Mike.
It's all right, call me and, and everything else that we want you to stay on board with. Thank you for the time, Bruce. And, and, and now we're, we're gonna do the same thing. Um. But do the same thing, go around the room and, and share our, our, our wonderful things about our short timer here.
Yeah.
Mr. Hunter, would you like for me to start?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Pam, I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart, um, everything that you have done in such a short period of time here at Spence report. Um, known you for quite a while. Um, like Ty had said, two weeks ago, you came in as a saint, you're leaving us as a ranger. Um, I think you and I have shared that same, that same feeling. Um, when it was brought to our attention that you were available for this position, I knew fully that you were gonna be the best person for our district for the short period of time. You came in at a very challenging time and with your poise and your demeanor, your positive thinking, your strategic thinking, um, and your listening skills of, uh, that ability to listen to all groups and take that information, process that, put together a polished product is second to none. You're a great leader, most importantly, a great person. Thank you for everything that you have done. You've, you've come into our district in a very short time to make a huge difference for all students, all staff and all families in our learning community. Thank you so much.
A doctor who still I've shared with you a couple of weeks ago. When you received that phone call from Joanne asking if you'd be willing to accept this position, filling in as an interim superintendent during what is clearly the most difficult time period that public schools have ever seen. I don't know why you didn't say wrong number anymore. But thankfully for us, you did not say wrong number, you graciously accepted. And from the moment that I met you, I've just been overwhelmingly impressed by the leadership that you brought to this district during these difficult times. You stepped in as somebody who maybe had some familiarity with some of the faces here, but you really just jumped in and started functioning as a toothpick girl a lot. Um, I, I can't say enough about how impressed I've been with what you've done for our district through these times and um, thank you very much and we wish you all the best.
So just listened to Greg and Laurie, uh, three words come to mind, uh, grace of dignity. Uh, but equally important is calm. And you, you know, you have a sense of calm about you. And uh, it's just short, I, I truly am amazed at your ability to navigate such treacherous waters. You've been two or three treacherous waters that you've been on board and you've been so.
Well, I'm gonna take what Greg said, he said you came in as a saint, you're still leaving as a saint, as you say. Uh, in my eyes, you still are a saint. Um, you're, the way that you take such a measured and thoughtful person, and it's been just uh, not only enjoyable to watch, but amazing for what you've been able to do for our district. When you couldn't easily come in and double chair and you certainly did not do that in any way. Um, you took it, you took it on, you took it as a leadership opportunity and, and did everything that you could possibly do with events this much you've been here. Thank you, thank you, Ben.
So it's hard to be redundant. Across the grid. Incredible knowledge base that brought. To the position in such tumultuous times. All the stuff going on. So many that are, because they don't watch paint jobs or what did this. So quite honestly, uh. Draw that kind of experience, we've witnessed that a lot, seen a lot. I think I feel bad about this, but you're not interested in my retirement. I brush your ass. But no, just.
I can only pay you the best compliment that I know, and that is, I hope the roads grow up to an ounce of your grace and poise and kindness. So blessed to have had you in our school this church over this time and to show the kids in our district the generosity of spirit that we show them. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna do a little nautical theme here. Correct me, we're, we're a little stray here. Um, well, when I, I, I shared that the first time we met, I, I asked, are you sure? And I am so glad that you did. Uh, like others have said, I kind of expected it to be just keep the ship afloat. And, and, and um, treacherous waters, oh yeah. Um, and, and not only did it keep her float, but I think you scared us, navigated us through a lot of really difficult situations. Um, and I couldn't think of anyone that, that I would want in that seat for the timeframe, then you. So real simple, thank you for saving us.
Thank you. So it's been, you know, like a great human. Seems like six months has flown by, but you're right, a lot has happened. Um, I am excited that I, how we, all kids got back to school, so we even if it was for only a couple of weeks at home in school, but you know, to think about kids not being in school every day just seemed, I felt unprecedented times. And. You gave me the opportunity to, you know, like kind of professor, you of our teaching leadership and you know, this gave me the opportunity to practice what I preached uh, at the end of my life. You know, you still got it, you know, it's probably fighter winning the Masters, right, uh, late in life, so uh. But I really think Spenceport is a very special place. So despite all the turbulence. You worked with me. But there were a few times when I thought to myself, just hang on. And a couple of you would say, well, no, you keep going, keep going. And that's all I needed really to keep looking at systems and uh, the way to encourage people and to build on people's strengths. And that's it, so. So I think we made it through and I think we've got a great start with coming up Thursday with Kristen. And I believe that we will be back in school five days a week. And let's hope that things are more normal and schools will be in a little more regularly. And your belief systems and your supports to kids are going to be great in the future at Spenceport. So thank you so much and I'll keep my eye on you, on what you're doing and just I'm hoping everything goes really well. just hope that everything goes really well. And Kate, it's the best compliment I could ever give. I mean, I think if you wouldn't say about your children, what's more important than your children, right? And that's why I wanted to discuss.
So, two things, Pam, one is, it seems like six months.
I know.
But also, I'm going to ask this, but, so then you sat back through your perspective and you just shook your head saying, oh my, this gracious. You've been through a lot, and then you sat back in your office there. You know, did you?
Well, I think the hardest parts was the uncertainty all the time of the guidelines. And, you know, I was so determined to try to find a way to get the kids back that would be safe and would be under the guidelines, and so we tried to, you know, have conversations with Dr. Gonzalez, looked at the rights, and before you knew it, something else would change. And so, in terms of trying to communicate and keep people informed without, because, you know, being a parent, as many of you are with kids in school, the frustration, the fears, and the whole thing was just so enormous. Yet, the uncertainty all the time, the rights, the guidelines shifting, or not getting any communication. And I thought when I got to June, okay, we're in June, what else could happen, right? And then the sucker letter comes out, and all the other confusion around, it looks like to a lot of people that maybe no more masks were required in schools. And yet it isn't what was communicated. And then comes out on a Friday at three o'clock, Kevin, you know, I said, I need to know where the board is. But we took our time. And we didn't get too far out ahead of ourselves in trying to strategize, and then fortunately, the commissioner weighed in and gave information around to stay the course with masks. And we communicated that, and off we went. But, yeah, those were the, those were the trying times. But here we are. And like I said, I think we're looking for five days in September, and getting better.
Thank you. Any board all board reports? We'll get to honor committee stuff later on, all right? Well, same for the exciting time. So we're going to turn it over to.
Well, this is actually one of the most exciting parts, too. You know, there's some good things happening along the way, and this is one of them with the federal stimulus funding. We're looking at increasing pre-K, I think that's really terrific. And we wanted to give you an update, there's been a lot of work done in a hurry because we didn't find out when we're going to have this funding, but Ty, tell us what's going on.
Thanks, Dr. Kissel. So I'm trying to give you a real quick skaters tour of where we are right now. So as you know, Kristen, I'm explaining myself, I presented for the Board of Education about two months ago, provided you an update, and there's some questions, I think those are really reasonable questions, I hope to address today. But as you know, almost two years ago, the board provided permission for us to explore a pilot program for pre-K. We were able to serve thirty-five students this past year. And we essentially had two different sections. We had shared both by the teacher and the teaching assistant, but just because of class sizes, we split into two, just so we could run it five days a week, and it was really, really successful. Students progressed throughout the school year, we're just going to provide you some really quick overview, you can just see the visual in terms of counting cardinality from the fall all the way up to the spring in terms of number recognition, geometry as well, you just see the scheme here of that blue area as students start to meet the necessary standards, obviously counting objects continues. And as we transition to a letter recognition, I think what's important to note here is that it recognizes and names some. So it doesn't mean that you have to recognize all twenty-six letters, whether it's uppercase or lowercase. So really impressive in terms of what Miss Campbell is able to accomplish this year with her thirty-five students. And we're really pleased that she's going to continue, she considers a mentor for the other three teachers who you can see here. So like now it would be Kelly Brady, Bernice Sarangi, and then that Taylor Sarangialzo as well. So we're really excited about this team, I think they're going to do a phenomenal job. And they're going to be working throughout the summer on this expansion as we move to a full-day pre-K program. So as you know, with the federal stimulus funds, it's designated for four-year-olds. And so really, it can, based on our work with Misses Klein and Mr. Wood, up to seventy-two students. We heard the board loud and clear when we presented two months ago in terms of where we stand with those individuals that already made a commitment to the half-day program. So, when that occurred, we had fifty-one students that made that commitment. And we had a few individuals, though, that weren't of age in terms of eligibility, and so we reached out to them. And so then we'll have funding for sixty-eight students, because there's four students that applies to, to me, and they don't meet that age criteria. So we'll receive a little bit less funding, but it's obviously they need a commitment to us, and I think it's only fair that we make a commitment in return to them. And so with that, we had some remaining spots to build. We had a lottery system of the twenty-eight individuals that applied. Twenty-one students were selected, that means that there's seven individuals on the waiting list. When we reached out to the parents, they provided us a rank preference of terms of which building they wanted their child to go to, knowing that we're canvassing the entire school district. Families were notified then, starting yesterday, in terms of where they fell into the lottery system. And of all those individuals that were selected to seventy-two, we'll start registration next week. So what does that mean? It means that families will come in, they'll work with myself, explaining, the pre-K teachers as well, I get settled, get registered, and we'll do a little bit of screening as well, just similar to what we do with pre-K as well. So where it stands right now, we have four sections, as you can see, one in each building. The hours of operations, so in terms of instruction, will occur from nine AM to two thirty PM. There will not be any transportation, we're going to begin a day later, so, which is normal in terms of what we usually do with kindergarten as well. So we're going to start our students on Thursday, September ninth. There won't be any special, that's why you see that additional, that early dismissal. We have to meet that requirement of X number of hours to fulfill the satisfied requirements of the pre-K program. Students will be provided lunch, which will even capture, so we're working with this reminder, some logistics when it comes to that. So our recess will be eighteen students in a class. And similar to what we shared with you, when you have eighteen students, you have to equip with an additional adult. If you move up to nineteen or twenty students, you have to have two additional adults. And so we will have not only a teacher, but also a teaching assistant each month at four pre-K schools. We'll be following a pre-based approach to what we do with kindergarten, and then next year, first grade as well. And then we're just working some logistics when it comes to. I think when we reached out to families who made that original commitment of a half-day program, a lot of their concerns was, is my child ready for a full day? So we sort of described some of the, what the program will look like, and we had conversations with each one. Emulated their concerns, I think they were more comfortable with this plan moving forward. So then we'll just work on parent-teacher conferences as well, which may be a slightly from each of the buildings, parent-teacher conferences. With that, that was a real quick overview, not sure if there's any questions that you have.
Just a tie in a question about the hours, with the nine to two ride before nine o'clock or arrive at nine, or do they start construction for their day at nine, I would say.
Similar with the eight-five students, so we'll start riding around eight forty-five, and then construction will start at nine o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
I have a related question to that. Have we thought about how that will impact the drop-off process at each, I'm thinking especially of Canale View and Bernaby, where they have the shared drop-off circle most years?
We're waiting to see what it will look like then, obviously, to see how many families, let me comment on the transportation, as you know, the spring, each one of our six buildings was a little bit busier than normal, more families were dropping off their children, so once we work with the four elementary principals, we'll do what that logistics, you know, that scenario that we have to address.
Okay, because thirty, there'll be thirty-six families then, right, dropping off just for pre-K in those two schools, so that's definitely something to keep an eye on. And then I was also just curious, now that we're having a classroom in each of the four school buildings, how are we doing on space at each of the elementary schools? Because I know that that is something that's been a little tight and getting tighter over the years, and I just want to make sure that we're still having enough physical space for everything.
I think physical space for next year, we're fine with one of each program, I mean, we could have an influx of students where it might be tight in one school, but you know, this is something that I think all the principals were eager about, to have a pre-K program in their respective schools. I think one of the challenges that we faced was that we had tailor. And that might be a future capital project that we may want to consider, knowing washrooms or bathrooms in each of the classrooms. We have kindergarten classes, but do not have a lavatory, and I think that's problematic. So that kind of influenced the decision a little bit of where that classroom would be, and a little displacement in terms of the domino effect, but I think for a term of reutilization, obviously, that has the most space, but we also generate some revenue from having a pre-K program there. But it's not an issue in terms of where we stand right now. Each building, like, hold up to two pre-K classes.
Okay.
I have just two big questions, Mike. Didn't we buy a pre-K bus?
We did, yes, we did, yeah.
And why is that being used for this year?
I think we made a decision not to offer transportation just to the logistics because of, there's a lot of different factors involved in that, and a lot of different regulations. But I think it's important that we do have that pre-K bus, because if we end up having a wraparound program, which is our eventual goal, what does that look like? You may recall that we put in an RFP to partner with community-based organization, we could not have anyone that apply to that RFP, because I think there are still, thinking that our program's still in that kind of exploratory phase. But we're confident that going, moving forward, like in subsequent years, that we'll have a partner with a wraparound program. So that, I think that pre-K bus will be really, also, if there's an emergency too, we'll need to transport those students, and so we can be that as a possibility.
Right, so the buses here are at site, we have, we have the physical bus. Right, yeah. I see they're all right at the high school back kind of passports. It's kind of amazing to drive through their, it's camp, it's just a sea of yellow there, it's quick, it's easy. Hundred buses are running.
Nothing.
Seem like a hundred.
So that bus being utilized. That, because it's not just pre-K, you know, you, I call it a converting process, it's really, it's, you can transport regular engaged students, and then it would be converted to a pre-K student.
I just want to say thank you again, this has been one of the more exciting initiatives, as, you know, as I've done on the board. As usual, Ty, you made it look easy, but I know it was a ton, a ton of work, so send my thanks to Kristen as well. When we talk about what's good for kids in our district, this clearly is so impactful on their learning, coming into school, and making them successful down the road, so I really do appreciate it. Very thankful.
Yeah, I think this is really exciting, and I know that how excited our four pre-K teachers are, which is a great opportunity for our community. I know that those applications will grow with each other's quick.
Ty, looking at that data that you presented on their achievement, is that something that's very interesting to me, that I know I asked earlier in the process, when we see some of that, to see the improvement for the half-day, it's going to be incredible to see what is the improvement rate going to be when we put in a full, full day for these kids. So, again, thank you for all the work that you and your team have done on this, and that, that team of pre-K teachers, amazing. They're going to be an amazing team.
Thank you.
Jonathan's going to share a little bit more about, we spent some discussion on the search and seizure policy seventy-three thirty.
Thank you, Dr. Kissel. As we discussed at the last board meeting on fifteenth, we talked about some of the equity-related policy changes. We had a strong discussion about prohibiting strip searches moving forward in the district. You've already approved in the consent agenda, the changes to the amendment to the code of conduct, which makes that clear and adds a little language about some procedures that go along with it. The change that I made to the policy really just formalizes the fact that strip searches are prohibited from here on out in the school district. That's really all I had prepared for today. But if you have any questions, or you think there should be a change or anything like that, please.
I thought you were going to go off and say, are there any further bus?
Yeah.
I'd say that's great.
Jonathan, thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you.
The wording is spot on.
Thank you. So you will.
Yeah, there's a motion to amend the policy seventy-three thirty.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I haven't stayed so late for that, that's all right.
That's me of communication of the successor agreement with.
Motion to, to, to commit this. I left your pass. And now.
This is the one part, that's the boring part.
I get twenty minutes.
Rick, I'd like to take the time to tell you how important you are.
Well, thank you, Kate. You're going to make me blush. Thank you, sir. As a matter of fact, I may get twenty-five or thirty, because Ty was so quick, and Jonathan's even quicker.
Get twenty minutes.
Any questions? All right, so, other than Laurie, you've all seen this presentation before. This is going to be big picture. Mike, you're more than welcome to come up and help present. You sure? Okay. Okay, reserve funds, we all know that they're accounted for separately on the general fund balance sheet. They're authorized under education and municipal law, general municipal law, and there are specific rules for each particular reserve. How are they generated from surplus funds? Remember that this is really the education piece, it's a surplus or an efficiency of revenue or expense. But you talk about that, I thought this was, this is a report that forecasts five, but again, trying to incorporate more of that. I thought this is a really nice job of sharing with you where the revenue is, which is in orange. The expense in blue, you can sort of see where we've been at, and then based on some of that, what's happened to our fund balance over the years. These questions are really something that the board needs to consider as we go through this, they're taken from the New York State Controller's Office. And I think they're, they're great questions that should be answered throughout as we talk about how to use reserves. This is identified, the way the auditors break it out, I love the way they do that, and this is exactly how we use these. The first three are really to help support the operating expenses. As you know, we do offset and subsidize our budget, and in using those, in particular, the compensated absence or the EVLR, again, is based on sick leave and vacation as of a snapshot on six thirty. You have those sort of umbrella areas, liability and taxer. You have those restricted for the specific purpose, we currently have four, which are listed there, and then you have the debt service fund. If you have any questions, feel free to come closer if you need to see, actually, you got to read there, but I, there's acronyms galore, so you need to stop for an acronym. Hopefully, I remember what it means. What does that word? It says it, Employee Benefit of Good Liability. Don't ask me what year or S are, I've forgotten. Historically, you can see this is where we've performed or where we've ended up as of each June. Again, in the green are those that really we use as an operating expense year to year. EVLR is sort of separated out differently, the ones in the yellow, again, more of that umbrella, and then in a blue, what we do for specific purposes, as you can see. When I say building, that's more of our building project reserve, we've got a bus and motor vehicle, which we actually used for the upcoming budget, and then we have it's actually, it's the same reserve that had to be broken out into just the way it was presented for the community. Just want to share with you, this is what we had budgeted for, remember that in twenty-twenty-one, we had budgeted up a little over two million to help subsidize the budget. You'll see later on, we're going to be in a little bit better position, so we won't need to cap into those. And then had that gone through, you would have seen that we've allocated one point four for the upcoming budget, which means we would have gone from about, I'm going to use this line here, about fourteen point two down to about ten point seven. about fourteen point two down to about ten point seven. Later tonight, you'll start to hear where I think we're going to be as a preliminary estimate. And you can see that instead of being at ten, we're going to be more like at thirteen. So we really haven't had to use a lot of what we did. And we're going to be able to replenish those as well. So again, you, you've seen these. Again, Lori, if you have questions specific to them, if you went through it. This is workers' comp. And in big picture, what I'm trying to get to is to have you confirm the rationale or the methodology in which we're going to fund the reserve. And you'll see that a little bit later. I went back with the last year's notes, but we talked about the workers' comp, the sort of the purpose and the reserve itself. Historically, that's where we're at. And this is the reserve target. Last year, after much conversation, you were comfortable with a, with a proposed rationale of five percent as a minimum, ten percent as a max for payroll. Are you still comfortable with that rationale versus just looking at what your prior annual budget amount would be multiplying at times four? So if that were the case, we would be up to one point seven. Right now, we're a little bit below. If you use it on percentage of payroll, you can see a minimum of one point nine, a max of three point nine. The importance of this is that when the state controller comes in and says, why do you have so much money in the reserve for workers' comp? Well, because our board policy has set it so that you can have a minimum and a maximum. You can actually see that we're below it. And we're in fourth, we're in good shape too, because we're actually using these in a manner that how they're supposed to be used. It's something that they can plot a factor. That's really what I really. The structure of an unemployment reserve. Historically, that's where we're at. So again, six sixty-two. Similar idea, if you wanted to go with what we used to do, that's four times the annual budget. We typically budget twenty-five thousand. That means you would have an unemployment reserve up to a hundred versus a proposed rationale of two percent of the payroll and up to five percent. You can see if, if the board did want to go to this rationale, we would most likely have to dissolve that. Put that into, I'd have to go back and see how we can do that. Again, last year, the board had decided to use the two percent and five percent. I would still recommend that very highly, especially this year. This was a very, this year and the last year. I think we probably quadruple unemployment expense. And then as federal stimulus, so the money coming to you, you won't even, you won't even see expense because we got the credit over a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Okay. The ERS reserve, again, the employer amount for non-certificated staff. Historically, this is where we've been. And you do know we use that quite often and continue replenish it. Then proposed rationale, last year's conversation was they were comfortable with fifteen percent as a min, twenty percent as a max. You can see where we are in that range. So again, we're, we're within all of the ranges that we're talking about. Any questions on that? TRS relatively brand new, going into the third year. This one has more stipulations to it as far as the maximum contribution. You can see that we were able to fund that in the first year of five hundred and fifty thousand. We then funded it in the second year to the max. So right now, we're at the max of what that could be. And then you'll see later on, we're probably going to maybe increase it up for the next round.
Yeah, if you can buy one side. One more please. So I might be jumping ahead for the interfund transfer for food service we're doing. This is from this one, right?
It's not coming from the reserve.
Oh.
So I can address that now or we can wait.
Go ahead. Why rather?
Okay.
Well, whatever.
Well, I'm not addressing now, then I can just ask any questions. So right now, we have a savings in the account line for the TRS. We have budgeted one amount, it's coming in much lower. It's enough to cover the transfer.
Yeah, for school month.
But it's not impacting the reserve at all. So again, this is the maximum amount allowed by law. So again, if we're in a position to do that, which we have been over the last couple of years, I would normally recommend we maximize that.
Sorry, can you go back to the one that had the low, the maximum contribution? Yeah. The balance cannot exceed ten percent. But didn't we just in the previous slide saying we're going twenty percent?
That was ERS. Employee retirement system. Just that acronym thing, kind of played out there for you. Again, liability reserve. Again, I consider this more of an umbrella policy. It usually covers anything that we don't have under our general liability. Historically, this is where we're at. This is one reserve where, again, if we move forward. Last year, the proposed rationale was five hundred thousand. The board felt comfortable keeping it at five hundred thousand. I seriously thought about maybe pumping that up to seven hundred and fifty thousand based on some of the events that occurred over the last year or so. However, I went back and forth, I ended going back to five hundred thousand, mainly because a lot of this was, could be used for underground storage tanks. But we actually have additional coverage for that. So I still think five hundred thousand dollars is an appropriate level. I throw that out to you if you feel five hundred is appropriate, increase it. Again, notice that we're at about a million. You can certainly keep it a million if you feel that that is worthwhile.
So of all things you've gone in the last six months, can we, we could do that for things?
So this is, I actually think based on what's transpired over the last year and a half, I actually think we will be tapping into this.
We haven't yet, though.
Not yet, or the related. Over a year and a half. So that's a conversation that I'll be having with, I'm pretty sure that. It depends on whether we want to. So what would happen is if we did tap into that, you're essentially, you know, lowering that reserve, which now you can, you can artificially create more surplus or you do a reallocation of that and put it into a different reserve. That's the question that I'll be asking. I'll come back to it for. How you want to move forward. So am I hearing anyone at a million? And I feel like an auctioneer up here. Going on, it's going. So are you comfortable changing it to five hundred? Because if it's going to be five hundred thousand, then I will go back, talk to our auditor about how you resolve this particular or move the money, that additional fund out.
So my only question. My only question is because you have a strong feeling that we will be tapping into this, you're still confident that five hundred thousand is the right place?
Yes. Let's do the question. Would you order five thousand, five hundred thousand and one dollars? That would, we go over there.
I like totally.
I, I think that you can keep it at five hundred thousand, but it will go up because it's earning interest. Oh, so sort of the base is five hundred, that's sort of what you contribute. You're still going to have a little bit more than that if you earn interest on it. I had to process that first. Good question.
Yeah, so just like our minimum max, if those are desired results, not exactly.
Yep. All right, so five hundred thousand. All right. Just put it up for it, right? Okay, tax cert. Again, we really don't have a max and a min for this. You can see we're at two ninety-two, we've been in the, you know, two hundred and eighty thousand. I actually think this will be really interesting. So tax cert is for Article sevens, typically for those corporations that are contesting their assessments. You can also apply it to homeowners. I think with what you're seeing in the marketplace right now, what homes are going for, I think at some point, you're going to begin to see people contesting their assessments. So I think that number will probably not change much. These, again, you're very familiar with the capital reserves. I just wanted to again, share this with you because ultimately we make the decision on where you want to go. Come back in September with the external report, but the goal is to have a more formalized reserve plan. So again, capital reserve for buses and motor vehicles. That heavy line is when we sort of renewed that. So you can see, I believe this was a two million dollar max over five-year term. We've only contributed under, a little under four hundred and thirty thousand. We haven't used this as often as we thought, because when you use this, it impacts the tax gap exclusion. We did use it this year for a hundred and thirty-one five for the purchase of the utility vehicle, the lift truck.
So Rick, can you go back? Five years seem to be every. That one. At five-year term, does that mean next year, we're going to have to be going out to both motor authorization because it will be two thousand?
It, it means you can only contribute to it for a period of five years. It can still extend beyond that. So you don't have to renew it if you don't want to. Not after five years. Up to two hundred dollars. Classroom equipment and technology. Again, we went back out in two thousand and thirteen where we funded at one point one. This is the one that you can, this, we were using quite consistently where we were allocating. I was looking at it because I denied it a couple of times. For using the reserve for classroom equipment. But in my defense, we are spending money on storage trailers. Just to house all of this until we get through the social distancing. Said to throw it out there. The way the, when it was renewed, it was worded a little bit differently. So instead of rolling the two thousand thirteen into a two thousand nineteen and that taking that money, we're only getting into a new one. We had to create a new reserve. And again, as part of the strategy for the one-to-one initiative, that's really what this is doing. It allows us options as we work through our budget. Because again, we've used the SSIP funds, which is about two point seven million over the last three, four years. How are we going to be able to maintain and establish that one-to-one initiative? Can also buy record exports, maybe. Okay, this is the capital reserve for building projects. This is the one that right now we're about nine hundred and seventy-three. I know the board is very anxious to start looking at what can we do in the near future. This is the one that we really have to, I think, focus on because our community, I think right now, is very accustomed to us going out with a project which has a minimal impact on the tax levy. Depending upon the size of the project. And that's one of the things that Dr. Kissel and I have discussed quite frequently, where we're currently working with our financial advisor to determine what type of projects that will be forthcoming. But this is the one that we really need to start bumping up there. But again, you can see, you know, we have used this quite frequently over each of the capital projects that we've done over the last ten, twenty years. So those are already set. There's really nothing for the board to decide other than what we do with the fund down at the end of the year, or you to make the decision if that's the particular reason you want to put my one two. Again, hopefully in October, come back with a more formalized reserve plan. These are the components of what that should include. And I'll be back with any questions. Just as exciting as UPK, I'm sure. Take it easy on the widget.
So the Heinerberg Building in Rochester, Tuck Park, and we're issuing the assessment of forty-one million dollars. And that was something that potentially come out of our cash. They have since knocked that down. Mouse. Stance of that. Tax challenge should be over.
It is over. And what's all.
And the small question that is, is through Amazon warehouse built in that area called schools. I don't know, or is that just going to be a tax loss?
So to address your first question, that Article seven is completed. And what they did was they didn't really adjust any prior taxes. So you didn't actually use any of the tax cert. They only did it moving forward. As far as the construction going on as it relates to Amazon, that is under a pilot. They've submitted the, that paperwork, the committee, the county has approved it. Now it becomes a matter of and just started beginning receiving some of those contracts. So I will share that in those notes. But what will happen right now is it's on the cash flow. I'm sure that will go up a little bit in value, but probably not much because they're doing some construction. Once the pilot agreement kicks in place, that will start the tax abatement. So that then the town assessor from Gates will provide us a value. They'll determine what the tax abatement is, and that's the amount that will pilot. And as I'm sure you're all well aware, that is going to have a dramatic impact on our tax cap calculation. Because that value is going to be.
Up and down with Dr. Tibbs, so you know how this is. So appropriately manage our.
We need to determine, that's actually the last conversation I had with Dr. Tibbs is we need to reach out to the town assessor. He needs to provide us some sort of information as to what he thinks the value of that is going to be. And that's the part I don't have yet. The value of the property, the value of, the value of the assessed value to multiply times the tax abatement. That it? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now a financial report.
All right, other than any questions, I do just want to highlight on the revenue side. It's going to be a pretty close estimate. I just want to show you that we did take into consideration the reduction in the transportation aid. So you're seeing cash flow, you're seeing, you're dealing with. Probably one of the five of us here is I was starting it. It's where we're coming in. It's really a blessing that we made the decision to not recognize the whole of the twenty percent of surplus. Had we not done that, this, this picture would be very, very different. On the expense side, just want to highlight, we tried to go out a little bit farther. We went from June eighteen versus an end. Very just again, try to get a little better picture of where we're going to be. I think this is one of the hardest things that we do and provide and sort of this. Where I think we're going to be on the expenditure. There's still a lot of things that are going on that are happening. I don't think there's going to be some large audit adjustments, but you never know. We are seeing savings. I tried to identify where the savings were and it's in salaries and it's in benefits. So I'm not surprised. I think once the audit is complete, we've got a conversation with the audit committee that much more detail for you as to what areas within salaries and benefits. That's what we're presenting. So big picture, it looks like we're going to have a surplus, a present rollover expense of about one point three million. This is not included. People approve. In that item, of this insurance transfer, it's increased by that amount. Nor does the projection of revenue include the write-off they do approve of thirty percent. So obviously.
Rick, I have a general school lunch question before you launch it. Do you, and I may have missed this one, I have it if I have. Do you have more information, any updates on the federal D or that's going to continue or not continue or anything regarding lunches that are paid for for next year?
It'll be, the program is continuing through six thirty of next year.
Okay, so all next year?
The next school year.
Breakfast and lunch for anybody that wants. I just always, I like to let people know that because I don't, I don't think everybody wants, anybody who needs to take advantage of it.
I know Gary has been doing some advertising with that. I believe they're going to do it one day, we offer. Yeah, so that's with Dave's question, I sort of shared the logic behind or the way to transport school lunch. Either way, it's going to get on the balance sheet. I highly recommend that, that take this, you sort of you're allowed school lunch, make it whole.
Did you have your, no problem.
We do, it didn't last.
Wow, I mean, it was acceptable.
This, yeah. It was, we had a little bit of surplus to begin with, over the operating loss overall was about 100,000. So that the net deficit from the balance was kind of about. So at that point in time, we better run. I don't know, I don't think that our operating loss but even up to amount, it allows some flexibility to what amount potentially call that.
School lunch is called at every hall. This is nothing, this is about six weeks.
Yeah, there are auditors, they're saying it's not going to. If you follow the guidelines, you're at all.
Alright, next round is the preliminary allocation of fund balance. Again, this, not beholden to it, they're typically off to amounts. Number one, again, 150,000 just for assigned fund balance in the event assessments come in very different. Allows you flexibility. Conferences are based on, you know, year-end increase to the unassigned appropriate fund balance. They don't allow the 32% of next year's budget, so that's an increase of 150,000. Essentially recommending that we replenish, allow the retirement contribution reserve of the 2021 budget, same thing for workers' comp. Maximize the TRS if we're able to. And then I don't, by any stretch of the imagination, that we're going to have this time. About two amounts.
If it was 2122, it would be evidently appropriated. We subsidize it with, not with appropriate allowance, so it's like. You'll accept the form of the fund balance and reserve allocation.
The last, your last. Meeting evaluation, happy time for our colleagues. They just like, thanks, trans, I hope they all know that. And, I'm not the place that we're getting through much here. We'll, there's a wide, a daily week, no mess. If Wendy's out there listening, we really appreciate you coming on board and having that conversation. That looks like they're on the, and we'll talk to you there. So at 7:16, we will move to a discussion session.
Motion to move to a second session to discuss the really history of certain individuals.
Thank you so much. 7:54, motion to make the, the second session. Sally, first, second, Mr. Givardo.
Yeah, alright.
All in favor? 7-0. Are you taking notes? Okay. Final motion to adjourn, Mr. Sally, second, Mr. Kincaid, all in favor, 7-0. Thank you so much.